Why don't we go ahead and get started? And there's Mr. Walden, just on time. There you go. Good to see you Pastor Walden. Okay, so I am going to call the regular meeting of the Temple City City Council, February 16th, 2021 to order. Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Here.
Mayor Chavez?
Here. Okay, just as a reminder, we are conducting this meeting pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N 2920, which was issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020. I can't even imagine that it's always, almost been a year. And under that edict, cities are allowed to hold city council meetings via teleconferencing. For those who are calling in, your microphone will be unmuted during public comment and when public comment is open during an agendized item discussion. You can also email your request to speak. You should do that now to cityclerk@templicity.us and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment upon. Alright, so as we always do, we will begin with our invocation. And I'm pleased and happy to have Pastor Jim Walden with us today from the First Baptist Church at 1619 Baldwin Avenue. I can't think of a better person to lead us in invocation for this, my last meeting as the mayor of Temple City. So I know you have done it many times and I'm glad that you're here this evening as well. So thank you for being with us this evening. And I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to you Pastor Walden. Thank you.
Oh, thank you Mayor Chavez. I appreciate it. And what an honor to be here with you. So let's pray. Father, what a wonderful month it is, this month of Valentine's with love. And Father, I have a great love for this city and you do, because you have made us. And I thank you for our mayor, how he has served and asked for a wonderful transition with the next mayor stepping in. And Father, thanks for the Camellia Festival and these wonderful kids that are a part of this annual event. It's so great to see their faces. Lord, we ask for your continued guidance and protection through this COVID time. Oh Father, that vaccines would be taking effect well and people would be protected. You would continue to spare lives. And Father, I ask for our nation and that our leadership, including those here in Temple City, would have your wisdom and your guidance. Thank you for how much you love us, God. We love you and thank you so much. In the name of Jesus, I say amen.
Amen. Thank you very much for that. And I can assure you that there will be a very smooth transition of power in the city of Temple City. Okay, alright. We will now move on to our Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone will please stand in the royal court, you can help us and join us. Why don't we ask our King and Queen to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Would you guys mind doing that? Okay, we can have King Leonardo and Queen Genevieve. If you guys will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, that'd be fantastic, okay? So I'm gonna turn it over to you guys. Go ahead. Are they unmuted?
At the agents.
Do the flag.
Do the flag.
In two republics towards the stands, one nation, under God, under visible liberty and justice. Amen. The sun and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you. That was fantastic. I put you on the spot there. I should have warned you ahead of time. But you guys did a fantastic job. Congratulations. Very good. Okay, well, with that, we are going to move on to our ceremonial matters. And we would like to introduce this year's Camellia Festival Royal Court. And I know that we have Dawn Tarran, our festival director online. And we also have Kyla Dunn, our festival, our Camellia general chairman. So let's see, who are we gonna hand it off to? Is that Kyla? Okay, so Kyla, we're gonna unmute you and we're gonna turn it over to you. Go ahead.
Alright, I'm ready. So I just wanna introduce myself. My name is Kyla Dunn, for those of you who don't know me. And I'm the general chairman for this year's very, very special and unique Camellia Festival. So this year, we just wanna make sure that the public knows, we've decided to make, instead of canceling our festival entirely, we wanted to make sure that this tradition continued on this year. And we decided to go virtual this year. Our coronation has already premiered, but it is still available to view. You can see all of these lovely kids and hear about each one of them. And that premiered on Saturday, February 13th at 7:00 PM. And then on Saturday, February 27th at 10 o'clock AM, our parade video will premiere with our Royal Court of First Graders, Grand Marshals, Co-Grand Marshals, Bert Ferntile and Matt Byers, as well as additional notable guests with commentary and performances sprinkled in between. While we can't have all of our wonderful organizations in the parade this year, there are still opportunities for the youth of Temple City to be involved in this year's festival. This year's theme is Everyday Heroes. And we wanna hear from the youth of our community who their hero is. They can do this by emailing the Camellia Festival a photo holding a sign telling us who their hero is. The photos will be shared the week leading up to the parade. In addition, we are having a miniature float contest with trophies, medals and cash prizes. So we can't have our normal floats walking down the street. So we're gonna do something a little different, still float contest, but miniature sized and in video form. The videos all need to be submitted. I think today was the last day, right Dawn? So today was the last day for float videos to be submitted. And they will be shown at 9:00 PM on Parade Day. All the information for the Camellia Festival this year is available on the website at www.cameliafestival.org. So that's my spiel. I think now the kids introduce themselves. Am I correct?
Or you can introduce them.
Why don't we do this? So we can all, let's see, we see their names. So maybe if you go ahead and introduce them, kids, if, when you hear your name, why don't you wave to us so we know who exactly we're seeing? How about that? We'll give that a try. Go ahead, Kyla.
Sorry, this is all a little weird on Zoom.
Yeah, it's a little weird on us too. Don't worry. We're just creating as we go.
So first, we have Prince Gavin Kelly. Gavin, can you give us a wave? There we go. And we have Princess Sophia Wu.
Alright.
We have, who else? Sabrina, where is she? Oh, there she is.
There's Sabrina. Sabrina's got that good wave down, I'll tell ya. She's practicing.
And then we have Prince Jackson.
Hi, Jackson.
There's Jackson. And then we have King Leonardo. And Queen Genevieve.
Alright, congratulations, all of you. Now, normally when we're in the council chambers, of course, we would have little goodie bags. So I don't know, I'm gonna have to defer to our city manager or city clerk. Somehow, we're gonna have to get our goodie bags to you guys. We'll work on that. If we haven't done that already, well, don't worry, they're in the mail. Or somehow, we'll get them to you, okay? And usually, when we have all of you in the council chambers, we usually set aside some time for any council members to maybe ask some questions. Or you might have some questions for us. So why don't I first turn it over to our council members? If there are any questions for the kids this evening? Cindy, I know you always have a question for them. You have to, there you go.
I have a question for Queen Sophia. How does it feel wearing that crown, Queen Sophia?
It's Queen, no, Queen Genevieve. Sophia is a princess.
Well, they all have crowns, right?
Yeah, they all have crowns right now, yes.
Sophia, then we can go to Queen Genevieve. How does it feel wearing that crown? Sabrina?
Go ahead, Sophia's unmuted.
Oh, Sophia.
Sophia. How does it feel wearing the crown, Sophia? Do you like it?
Yes, I like it.
Well, you look great in it.
Do you sleep with that crown on your head?
I do not sleep.
Well, you look very pretty with it. And then where is Queen Genevieve? I don't see her.
Up at the top, Genevieve Zuta.
Okay, is she unmuted?
I'm not sure. Genevieve, can you say something for us if we can hear you? Nope, she's not unmuted, so.
Okay, maybe someone else has better questions.
Alright. Well, this is a challenge. There's no question about that. But any other questions by council of any of the girls or the boys?
Mayor Chavez, they do all have certificates. They might be able to hold them up for you.
Oh, you guys have certificates?
I did. King Leonardo has a question for us. He raised his hand.
Okay, there you go. Alright, King Leonardo?
I feel lucky and proud.
Wow.
Well, we're proud that you're representing the city. So congratulations. I know it's been a lot of hard work. And there's your certificates that they're holding up.
Oh, wow.
So those are very nice. Make sure you keep those. Those are gonna be worth a whole lot of money one day. So, no, that's fantastic. Well, you know, you guys have a full year ahead of you. And hopefully, and I know that this is going to happen because Pastor Walden has assured me that this is gonna be over sooner than later. And soon, before your reign is over, we're gonna have all of you in our council chambers so we can do a proper hello and congratulations to all of you. And, you know, I hope you look forward to Saturday because I know it's a little bit different, but it's gonna still be a great event for all of you. And I know that the committee, Kyla, Dawn, all have some nice things lined up for all of you. And as I said, throughout the year, as things start getting a little bit better, we'll be able to enjoy more of the things that the royal court is used to participating in. So, okay, any other questions by the royal court? Any questions that you have for us? No? Alright, well, it was a pleasure having you this evening. Thank you for being with us. Thank your parents as well. Do we have the parents of each of them with us? Do we know who the parents are? Maybe, maybe your parents can, there you go. There are the Kellys. I know who they are. Okay. Congratulations. Go ahead, give us a wave. You can sneak in there. Congratulations to the parents. Of course, there's no question that you guys have done a great job so far raising your children. And I hope you can, we'll be continuing with that. And they've got a lot to go. And as I said earlier, they turned from first graders into college students so quickly. And, you know, it just seems like yesterday that my first grade class was there. So, Mr. Zuta, good to see you. Thank you for joining us this evening. Okay, well, if that's all we have, we'll say goodnight to all of you. Stay safe and we'll see you on Saturday, okay? Alright, take care of yourselves. Practice those waves.
Be ready for the candy.
Alright, we'll get that candy to you. Alright, take care. Have a good evening. Oh, thank you. Bye-bye.
Good night. Bye.
Good night, bye.
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 Okay, well, that was very nice. I should say, one thing we forgot to mention that we always do is where they're from. I know that King Leonardo is from St. Philip the Apostle School. Queen Genevieve is from La Rosa Elementary. Prince Gavin is from Longden Elementary. Princess Sophia is from Holly Avenue. Princess Jackson is from Emperor Elementary. And Princess Sabrina is from Longden. So we have a good representation of all the schools in the area. So thank you for that. So, okay, alright. So we'll go ahead and that was a very nice treat for all of us, so.
Nice meeting you.
Alright, nice to meet you. We'll hope to meet you in person one day. Alright, take care. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to item number six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. The city council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. And so I will begin by asking our city clerk if she has any email requests to speak at this time.
Mayor, there are no email requests at this time.
Okay, and I know that we have a number of callers. So if you will, please unmute the callers. And I will ask for any of those who are online, if you would like to speak at this time, just first announce your name and then go ahead and speak. Do we have anybody? Okay, maybe you wanna wait till later when we get to another item, so. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comments. And we will now move on to item number seven, which are our consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion. You have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion and a second unless there's any objection. Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Do you have a motion? Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
I will move to approve the consent calendar.
Getting a lot of old feedback there. That's unusual. Okay, did you say my name, Peggy? I'm sorry.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes. Okay, so that item has been approved. We will now move on to item number eight, our public hearing. There is none. And we will now move on to item nine, unfinished business. There is none this evening. And that leads us to item number 10, our new business, item A, is an amended agreement for the collection of solid waste, recyclables and yard waste to comply with state law and mandates. And so I'm gonna go ahead and turn that over to Mr. Cook. And if he has anyone he wants to speak, he'll say so. So, Mr. Cook, it's all yours.
Thank you Mayor Chavez and members of the council. Before you tonight is a very substantial amendment to the agreement with Athens Services to provide waste hauling, disposal, recycling and green waste recycling to the city of Temple City. With me tonight are some people I'd like to point out. First, Eric Vale, who serves as the city attorney. Mr. Vale is also a special counsel to the city, former city attorney of the city of Temple City, but also special counsel in this case. Mr. Vale brings years of experience in dealing with waste hauling agreements. Also with you tonight is Richard Tagore Irwin from R3 Consulting. R3 Consulting is an independent consulting firm expert and their expertise is waste hauling agreements and franchise agreements. Also with you tonight are representatives from Athens Services, including Christian Warner, Gary Clifford and Ed Chen, who will be here. I will be doing the bulk of the presentation tonight. Any questions that you may have, but if there are some technical questions that the council has, our city team of experts and Athens are here for any implementation questions that you may have. So with that, the city clerk's actually gonna pull up the presentation for me and we'll start going. The first slide, please Peggy. Thank you. So the question becomes, why do we need to change our trash service and why now? And it boils down to a very simple issue, state law and what I will describe unfunded, my words, unfunded state mandates. And this stems from a series of bills over a series of years. Senate Bill, excuse me, Assembly Bill 939, which was really the impetus for all things you think about in terms of recycling and how the way, and the manner in which California cities and every agency in California disposes of waste. It's really what started the recycling programs, the blue bins that you see traditionally throughout cities. Then the subsequent bills that are noted, AB 341, AB 1826 and SB 1381, which were passed between about 2014 to 2016, really took that integrated waste management concept and that law and carried it further into further mandates and requirements to cities, which it is our responsibility at the end of the day to implement, related to how we recycle, what we recycle and the manner in which we recycle it. Lastly, the last two bills, AB 1826 and SB 1381, really defined and created a timeline in which those laws must be implemented really to deal in essence with trash in three ways. Making sure you're sorting, collecting and recycling regular trash, recycling and organic and green waste. So over the years, we've been trying to work through to get in compliance with this law. And we'll talk about why the change is necessary in order to become in compliance. The state has not provided any extensions to comply, nor they have provided any relief to these state mandates. So we've been working with CalRecycle over the last few years to try to go onto the road of compliance. To the point where last year, in August of 2020, the state's agency called CalRecycle, this is the regulatory agency that goes over and ensures that all agencies are in compliance with state law, actually put us what I'll call in the penalty box. We were essentially sanctioned. What does that mean? So that meant that we were not on the road to providing these three streams of waste removal and waste recycling in a manner that met the law. So what does that mean to us now? That means if we don't have a separate collection system program implemented by January 1st, 2022, the sanction that the state gave us back in August gives them grounds and the ability to sue, to fine the city up to $10,000 per day.
I'm not sure what that noise is, but if everyone, if everyone who is not speaking can go on mute, that would be great.
Mr. Rudell must have been on Amtrak or something. Sounded like there for a sec. We then, we were then subject to these fines over the next, over 2022. Next slide, please. So what service changes are gonna be required in order to comply with these state laws and mandates? And I'm giving a very broad overview of what all these mean and what the impact is to all of the residents and businesses in Temple City. So in order to comply with state law, we've been working with our franchise hall, our Athens Services, to provide what we consider a comprehensive and economical operational plan and what will be a substantial adjustment in services. To sum it up very simply and to not sugarcoat anything, the most feasible and economical way to comply with the law, especially with residential customers, is to move to a once a week automated multi-cart system. Athens will try to do the best that they can to maintain the same day pickup, albeit you will go from twice a week to once a week and maintain that same day of service. Also, what will be maintained and what is not explicitly stated in the law, in the state laws, nor anything that we need to be concerned about at this time, but a further adjustment we'll be making, is our bulky item pickup system, which is very popular. Will we remain in place and stay at a once a week service? But due to the automated service that we will now have to be employing in order to economically and feasibly implement this new system, residents will have to call Athens to schedule that once a week bulky item pickup. Now, you can, twice a week, you can put that out. Athens will come pick it up. This, over as we transition, we'll talk a little bit about the transition period. Residents will have to call to schedule that once a week bulky item pickup. Next slide, please. Commercial and multifamily customers that have bin service will also have to comply with state law. In many cases, because of the three types of waste streams we will be dealing with, many of the commercial and multifamily customers will have to get new and additional bins. Athens will be working very diligently with our commercial customers and our multifamily customers to address this adjustment with each customer. If approved tonight, the city then would submit this program change and this agreement amendment with Athens immediately to the state and ask for those sanctions to be lifted in order to relieve us from any potential fines or punitive measures the state will take against us. This action, along with your next item, which is actually the ordinance that would also make this effective as well, so they are kind of tied together. We would be submitting both of those items to the state of California, showing our compliance and our road to compliance with all those state mandates and laws and working with them so that by January 1st, 2022, they deem us in compliance. This amendment, though, with Athens allows Athens up till July 1st of this year to implement this change. As you can imagine, this change is expensive. This change means a complete overhaul of the services that Athens has provided to the community for many decades, both from an operational side, but also from a capital side with new trucks, containers, everything else that they'll be doing. So we want to give them time, but also, just as importantly, we want to give the residents time to adjust and understand what their needs are. We'll talk about some of the different bins and services that'll be provided to residents shortly. Next slide, please. So this type of complete overhaul in service is requiring an adjustment in rates. But we'll talk about some of the things that we were able to negotiate with Athens through this amendment in order to create a stable rate system that's consistent and does not overly burden and put too much cost burden on the customers. So as you may know, residential and service, commercial service rates have not been increased since July 1st of 2018, almost two and a half years. And this is despite the Athens ability to adjust rates on an annual basis based on the prior agreement, based on cost of disposal and annual consumer price index, or kind of inflation index. So for residential customers, effective January 1st of this year, so going retroactively back to about a month and a half, rates will increase for residential customers by 3.65% or approximately $1.35 per month for the basic service rate. Then effective every July 1st thereafter, we would then go back to rates being adjusted annually by CPI and a 1% capital replacement charge to amortize the cost of this replacement of all these carts, all these vehicles over time. But there will be some level of price rate protection where annually, the increases will not be able to exceed 5% a year for three consecutive years. Now, our current commercial customer, bin users and our multifamily households will see a different increase. That increase is based upon That increase is based upon the, the increase of compliance and other issues related to following these laws and having these new mandates. The commercial customers will see an increase of 20.2% and multifamilies, 26.5%. After that, it will be the same as residential customers. Effective July 1st, rates will be adjusted annually by the Consumer Price Index and the 1% replacement charge. Similarly to residential customers, there will be a cap of no more of 5% for three consecutive years with those rates. Next slide, please.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, Ms. Councilmember Sternquist.
Could you just share what constitutes multifamily?
I will, I will, I will, I will work with Mr. Tagora Irwin as well. Multifamily is defined in the franchise agreement, is not a duplex or, or those. Those are units of four or more that would, that would be multifamily. We will be working with the customers that have duplexes and other types of complexes as well, which may require some other adjustments. But Mr. Tagora Irwin, is, did you, anything you want to add?
No, Brian, I think that's absolutely correct. Basically, multifamily customers that are, you know, four or less will be treated as the same as a single family customer. Where there may be some overlap, and this is where it's important for Athens to go out and do all the site audits, is if on the smaller complexes, they may currently be serviced by a bin.
Mr. Cook? Can you hear me? This is Franklin Riddell.
Mr. Riddell?
Hey, Mr. Riddell, we're not taking any questions right now. You will have an opportunity.
I was just going to make a statement in answer to Mr. Cook.
We're not taking any statements or questions at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on. Otherwise, we'll just kind of just be all over the place. So I just ask that you hold your statement and question till the time we get to that, please.
Thank you, Brian. I just wanted it to be clarified for the public that might not have known that. So thank you, since you mentioned multifamily.
Mayor and council members, I want to make one clarification for you. It's five or more dwelling units, not four, five.
Okay.
A multifamily residence is five or more units. If you've got four units, you're still a single family.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sternquist. That was a good clarification to have that we didn't have on the slide there. So how will, what will residents and businesses need to do to prepare? And are there any additional costs? So with the rollout for the single family residential customer, Athens will be providing 64-gallon containers at no additional charge or increase beyond the 1%, 3% increase that I just discussed earlier. So there'll be, every customer throughout the entire, that uses Athens right now, will see that increase as a retroactively to January 1st of this year, that 3.65% increase. Now, as Athens transitions to the automated cart system, every, the default, or what every customer will receive right off the bat, will be a 64-gallon container. And again, that will be provided at no additional charge or increase in monthly service rates to customers. Now, if a residential customer wishes to upgrade to a 96-gallon container, they may do so, but that will increase their monthly rates by $5.02 a month. Conversely, a residential customer may wish to downgrade to a 32-gallon container. If that is the case, then their monthly service rate will decrease by, down by $2.41 a gallon. Three containers all, and we cannot mix and match those containers. Those will be provided in a uniform standard. So seniors living in a single family residence that downgrade to a 32-gallon container, who currently qualify, sorry, carts, not, not containers, excuse me. Seniors living in a single family residence that are downgrade to a 32-gallon cart, sorry for the difference in nomenclature, would qualify if they currently have reduced utility rates with like a SoCal Edison, their rates would be reduced by $5.76 a month. Next slide, please. So what are the terms of this agreement if, if I was to summarize it in a nutshell? Athens Services currently has a, a, a long-term agreement with the city to be its exclusive waste hauler and has a little more than 25, a little less than 25 years remaining on its existing contract. Now, there may be some discussion about long-term or short-term contracts, but the benefit of a long-term contract, especially in the midst of the mandates that the state of California is asking and now mandating of us, it does really provide stability to both the customers and the waste hauler to make the long-term investments and necessarily capital, equipment, and facilities purchases over a longer period of time. We're seeing with many waste haulers where shorter term agreements are in place, the price tag or the cost that the waste haulers are passing on to customers is very substantial. Sometimes in the forms of a one-time hit and then a longer term adjustment. It is very significant. These, these costs are really spread over time and amortized over a period of years. Athens Services has a organics recycling facility and other things that many other larger or even midsize waste haulers do not have. And if they do have it, they are contracting those out. Athens contracts out services as well, but a longer term contract allows that spread to go out over a period of time. In cities where they're transitioning, again, in shorter term agreements, those costs and those increases are very significant. You do not have to look very far around, in and around the San Gabriel Valley in, in public meetings to see some of those increases that they're have, that they have. They are quite substantial. Next slide, please. The amendment does provide Athens with a renewable 30-year term that renews every year, provided that Athens is not in default. Now, currently, there are, there is a franchise fee of 5% for all commercial customers. This rate is, it will remain the same. Now, this, this fee should apply to all commercial customers, including multifamily complexes. Some multifamily complexes may have not seen that in the past, but it is, it is supposed to apply to all of them. The city has not had a franchise fee that has been applied to single family residential customers. So in lieu of, and that is, that is a pass-through that is directly, people can look at their, their bill. They have a base service bill, base rate, and a 5% fee. So in lieu of any adjustments to the franchise fees for residential customers, Athens has agreed to an annual contract extension payment of $300,000 a year in lieu of a franchise fee be passed on to residential customers. So again, this, this fee is not directly passed on to residential customers. So the residential customers will not see a 5% franchise fee on their bill. That will be paid directly by Athens. Next slide, please. What other term, what are, what are the other additional terms of this agreement and some other payments and compliance fees? Well, because of this cost of compliance with state law, the city is allowed to pass on a compliance fee, AB 939, which is the Integrated Waste Management Act. That will go up slightly from 0.5% currently to 1% or about 35 cents per month for residential customers. Commercial customers' compliance fees will be about three, will move from 3% to 5%. This, this agreement structure is developed to achieve compliance with the state and at the same time, really try to minimize what we are passing on to customers. Next slide, please. We also took this opportunity, working with Athens, to meet these state requirements and in extensive discussions with CalRecycle, knowing what they were asking for, then working with Athens to try to create an agreement that would, that would address it. We took this opportunity to make some improvements to the existing franchise agreement, to do a couple of things. One, to enhance our liability protection as a city and by extension to customers, and allow for performance reviews. Now, the prior agreement with Athens did not speak to or really clearly spell out some key operational obligations or the performance reviews. So what this, what this agreement does is it really clearly lays out explicitly what is allowed for systemic performance reviews by the city as we go. And the reason why this was important is because obviously having been sanctioned by the state of California, and again, we are the responsible entity in this process of the entity that is sanctioned. We want to make sure that the waste hauler that is in our city is doing all that they can to make sure that we are in compliance and, and by extension, our residents and our businesses are in compliance. So it really, truly, clearly defines what Athens' responsibility is also on the, on reporting to the state of California. We are a contract city, we're small, we have experts that assist us through this process. That is an expensive process, but Athens does have a long-term agreement that does, in our mind, require them to do the bulk of the work on the reporting side. This also gave us an opportunity to look at the insurance requirements that hadn't been reviewed for a long time with Athens, which updated to include broader and more comprehensive liability, workers' compensation, and in this case, too, pollution insurance. With all the mandates that the state of California is asking, things like pollution insurance, which may have not been as a significant item in the past, has become much more significant. A couple of other things that we really needed to spell out too, and it gets back to the prior points, is really clearly define the obligations and processes related to future changes in law. The struggle that not only the city of Temple City and Athens has had, but many agencies have had with, had with their waste haulers, is defining the terms and defining the process of when a law changes, what that means to the obligations that the city has to ensure that they are complying with the law related to waste hauling, and what new changes may come about. Now, we have a much more clearly defined process with Athens with that. And that allows us to really, truly, clearly define the obligations with the contract renewal period as well. Next slide, please. Now, this will be a long transition, and this transition is really on the shoulders of Athens. Athens has agreed to a transition plan that allows residential and commercial customers to move into this new system with the least amount of inconvenience, even though this is a very, we can't sugarcoat it, it is a substantial change, but with no interruption of services. So it's not like one day you're gonna switch over from two day a week, put out your barrels, and then next week you're automated. This will take time, this will take proper noticing from, from the Athens. They will be working directly with each of these customers, each of the customers. Some other quick benefits, though, too, as well, to this automated system. As we are working through COVID and we're working through this pandemic, manual handling of trash cans is a challenge for the Athens employees to make sure that they're mitigating against risk. And we most, and our trash cans don't have any lids. So this truly helps us from a environmental standpoint in dealing with a system that is a bit safer for both the residents and for Athens employees as well. And then one day we pick up, we're gonna have fewer trucks on the streets, less wear and tear on our infrastructure as well. Next slide, please. So that is a broad overview and summary. Attached to the staff report is the entire, it's agreement in its entirety, the entire rate schedule, and also the transition plan that Athens themselves has developed. So with that, I am open to any questions of the council.
Hey, thank you for that report. We will begin with council questions. Why don't we begin with Councilmember Mann? Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. Yeah, just a couple of just clarifying questions. Earlier, you, you mentioned that the, the rates are gonna be, just, rates are usually adjusted by CPI and we hadn't had an adjustment since 2018. What was approximately the CPI within the last couple of years?
I'll defer to Richard, Mr. Tagora Irwin, on that one, but I believe it's anywhere between 2.5% to about 3.5% plus or minus. You're on mute there, Richard.
There we go. That's, that's a pretty fair approximation. I think this last year was a little bit lower, was more like 2%, but it has been typically runs anywhere from 2% to as high as 4%. And also, the other thing to keep in mind, your current contract, it has both a CPI adjustment and also a disposal component adjustment. So the total rate was actually a little bit higher than the CPI, if you were to follow that methodology.
Understood, thank you. And my, my second question is, just again, to clarify, is, is it highly unusual for cities to have twice a week trash service? Our neighbors?
I will make that comment and I'll defer to Mr. Tagora Irwin, who does work throughout the state of California. The general answer is yes, it is unusual to have twice a week service generally across the board. But I, I don't, there's, and in a particular manual, twice a week service, it is quite unusual. But Richard, is there anything you want to add?
I think there's less than a dozen statewide that are still twice a week and manual. It's, everybody has long since moved to at least weekly and automated is really where most of the companies have gone and most of the cities have gone.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is just, I think you alluded to that, Mr. Cook, but we're aware that other cities are also working on agreements to comply with state law. I mean, this is affecting everyone, not, we're not an isolated incident.
That's correct, Councilmember Mann. You do not need to look further than several cities around us in the most, very recently, who have had to make adjustments in rates. Granted, not from two day a week to one day a week, but adjustments in rates that are pretty substantial that, in order to comply with the law.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, are there any questions at this time?
No questions. I think I just kind of like to make a comment. William mentioned twice a week service, and I think that was probably my biggest concern initially. But, you know, after studying this for a couple of years and what other cities are doing, I realized that twice a week service doesn't necessarily mean, mean that it's more efficient than once a week service. So I think that's something that just came to my mind when William said that. But I think we have, you know, worked so closely with both Athens and our staff that I really don't have any more questions. I'm, you know, I, I think I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Viskar, any questions?
I'm muted, sir. Where's my cup? Here we go.
There we go. On average, do we know how we compare with other cities like Sierra Madre and?
We haven't done a, related to this proposal, sir, we have not done a, a rate survey, but in general, we're about in the middle to most San Gabriel Valley cities.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Protam, you, any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make, ask a couple of clarification questions. And I think, Mr. City Manager, you made that very clear, but, but I thought that perhaps we should need to say that each resident will be, will be provided with three containers or three carts. I think at one point, maybe we mentioned one 64-gallon, but that really it will be given three carts. Is that right, Mr. Cook?
Yes, but in order to comply, we, it will be a transition related to the food waste component, but there will be a recycling bin, a waste bin, and a green waste slash organics bin. but there will be a recycling bin, a waste bin, and a green waste slash organics bin.
And then one other thing, perhaps you could elaborate on, or which is, I think it's implied in your presentation, but it wasn't, in my mind, could be perhaps a little clearer articulated, that is, the new state mandate consisting of the several of the Assembly bills, the Senate bills, actually will result in higher costs in order to comply with them. And that's really the challenge. And perhaps you could articulate why these will be higher cost?
For certain.
Maybe Richard can help us. Why do you have a higher cost to it?
Richard has provided that analysis to us. And, Richard, if you won't mind, kind of walking through why the cost of compliance equals the higher costs overall and how we're trying to mitigate against that?
And it's relatively simple. One, you've got a different collection system, which is more efficient, and it actually is a lower cost. So that's an offsetting cost. The primary driver on the cost is the cost to process the organic materials. Where before it was being used as alternative Bailey cover at the landfill, to very, very low cost, that's no longer allowable. It all has to go to composting facility. And so, for example, for just the green waste cost has gone from $25 a ton to $100 a ton to process. At the same thing for commercial organics, which they have not had to have pulled out yet, it is now got to be taken in a separate container and taken to a compost facility. Those are the primary drivers of what was occurred with the cost. Those changes to processing affect the actual route collection. It affects the transportation and the transport costs, all interrelated. And more importantly, in order to implement programs, what the state is requiring the city to do and requiring the haulers to do is have a pretty aggressive public education outreach program on an ongoing basis. So it's no longer out of sight, out of mind. It's continual reminders of what has to happen. Athens has to provide a plan. They've provided a draft plan now. They have to update that on an annualized basis to really target the diversion requirements the city has to meet. So it is a, it's a top-down from the state down to you folks, the city level, down to the customers, everybody has to comply.
Perhaps you can also elaborate on what are organics and how is it different from green waste?
Okay. Organics, the way the state has defined it, is a very, very broad category. We've always thought of it as just green waste. Well, it's green waste, it's wood waste, it's food scraps, it's soil contaminated paper, it's actually cotton materials, things like that, and textiles. Those are all considered organic within the state's definitions. They've targeted all of that. And if you look at the waste streams being disposed, currently being disposed, there's still about 50% of the disposed waste stream is considered organic waste. And this is done through the law that has put this in place, SB 1383. They did this through greenhouse gas reduction. So they're trying to get the organic material out of landfill to reduce greenhouse gases. And unfortunately, all of us at the consumer levels were substantial contributors to the organics going in landfill until we've changed our programs, which is what is in front of the council tonight.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, thank you. As, you know, the city manager pointed out when he began, this amended agreement is a big deal for the city. It's something that we all have been working on for quite some time. And I would just point out that although it may seem that there are not a whole lot of questions perhaps posed by council at this time, that's primarily due to the fact that we have been doing that all along and have had many questions until this point and had many of those answered, which has, of course, resulted in what you see. So with that, I'm going to now open up public comment. I will ask the city clerk if there are any email requests to speak on this matter at this time.
Yes, Mayor, I have one email from Lucy Liu, and if I may read her comment.
Please.
"I'm excited and fully supportive of the new waste collection proposal, allowing residents to have a more active role in protecting our planet. My only concern is with the trash scavengers. How can we protect our trash from these people now that having blue bins will make it even easier for them to dig through?" I do have other requests for speakers to speak, but that's the only email comment.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we go ahead then and move to our public that are online? If you want to go ahead and announce the name, and then when your name is announced, please feel free to speak. Remember that time is limited, so I will give you the opportunity to speak. But if it starts getting too much, then we'll cut you off and get to the point. So, all right, so go ahead.
Mayor, I do have a request from Peter Choi and Robert Wang.
Okay, for both of them at the same time, or one, who's gonna speak?
If you wouldn't mind, can we call Mr. Peter Choi first?
Sure, right. Go ahead, Peter. Are you online?
Oh, good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Oh, good evening, Mayor Chavez and councilmembers. I am Peter Choi, President of the Temple City Chamber of Commerce. First, quickly, congratulations to this year's Camellia Royal Court. That was adorable. Thank you for bringing joy to all of us. And please check out this month's issue of Temple City Life, which has some look back, some nice memories of the Camellia Festival, including from some here in this virtual meeting. But I am here virtually tonight to voice our support for item number 10A and for approval of the amended agreement with Athens Services, the basic points which were reviewed at our February board meeting. The Chamber has been happy with their services, both at our longtime former Chamber office on Sultana and Las Tunas and our current offices next to City Hall. Over the years, our service needs, especially during our new location move in 2019, have been handled very satisfyingly. And for these reasons, as a happy customer, we support approval for this new restated agreement with Athens Services. And finally, thank you to City Manager Cook and city staff for their work on this amended agreement, which brings the city in compliance with the already discussed unfunded state mandate. And we especially appreciate their efforts to minimize costs passed on to customers. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Peter. Okay. Madam Clerk, go to next.
Yes, if we could call Mr. Robert Wang.
Mr. Wang, are you with us?
Street in Temple City. Hello? Oh, yeah, hi.
My name is? My name is Robert. I live on Lancier Street. And
Mr. Wang, or Mr. Wang, are you? Mr. Wang, hold on. Mr. Wang, hold on one second. Hold on, you were getting a lot of feedback. Can you, are you talking on more than one device or just one? We can barely hear you. Would you mind maybe hanging up and calling back? Maybe we can get a better handle, because we can't really hear you. Okay, why don't we go to the next caller?
I, we're gonna go ahead and unmute the microphones. And if the callers would please announce your name, we'll add your name to the list and we'll call you to speak one at a time.
Okay, so let's get somebody.
Robert again? Can you hear me?
Okay.
Hello? Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now. Is this Robert Wang?
Okay, this is, yes, correct. Yeah, so as I was saying earlier, I live on Lancier Street. And one of my concerns was, I think it was brought up too, was there a cost analysis or comparison done with some of the local cities to make sure our rate is competitive? I know City of San Gabriel has Athens service, and they have the three bins that is being talked about for the green, regular waste, and recyclable. So I was just kind of curious if the city kind of actually checked with Athens Services or checked out the rate with City of San Gabriel to see where our rate is in comparison to City of San Gabriel and any other adjacent cities to make sure, you know, we're getting a competitive rate. And also, my concern is since we're going from two days a week trash pickup, now we're going to one day a week, wouldn't our rate, should our rate decrease as well? I don't know if that's also factored in, but we're not getting the bi-weekly pickup. So I was just curious to, you know, where do we stand in relation to the other cities, especially like City of San Gabriel, since they have Athens service as well and with, you know, the three bin pickup? And, you know, whether we're getting a competitive rate, you know, when compared to those cities?
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Cook, did you want to respond to that, or you want me to, or do we want to respond at all?
I'm happy to respond if that's the all of the mayor and the council.
Go ahead, maybe give us a quick response to that.
Sure. We are, the increase is related to the, Ms. Quo, can you, do you mind? Thank you. Related to the question of the survey, I think I mentioned that before with Mayor Protem Yu, we did not do a complete survey, but we know we land somewhere about in the middle of the San Gabriel Valley. In addition to, I do know that San Gabriel, it's public information, it's been on their council agendas, have had higher single-digit increases over the next two years related to their rates in order to transition to a three-bin system as well. So, but we do have a long-term agreement with Athens. So in terms of anything that we would do in terms of comparing it to other agencies, our goal was to look at this agreement and see the best that we could do with mitigating what we knew would be a substantial cost impact over time related to compliance. And if there's anything else I'd like to answer, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, well, no, that's fine. And, you know, the difficulty here is, even though this is public comment, since it's, you know, it's difficult sometimes to address specific questions like this. But I want all of you who are calling in, if you don't feel that you got your question answered this evening, please feel free to contact myself or the city manager, and we will discuss this more in depth with you, you know, to help you to understand. I just want to add one thing, you know, I've heard a lot about comparing, you know, have we done comparisons to other cities? I know I received a couple of emails earlier this evening. You know, every contract is different, and every one city is different. And there is no real one size fits all. And it depends on where you start, of course, and where you end up. You know, I think under the circumstances, and of course, we're gonna get to that tonight, does this agreement fit the city? It's not gonna fit Monrovia. It's not gonna fit San Gabriel necessarily. But, you know, we're worried about Temple City and what we can do and how we can do it and what's best for our residents. And no one likes to get price increases. There's no question about that. However, to say, well, how come this city is paying this much and we're paying that much? There's a lot more to it than that, believe me. You know, but again, you know, we're certainly available to get into the details, and the agreement is there. We would be happy to go through those at any time, so. All right, so let's go to the next caller. Who do we have now on the line? Anybody?
I'm sorry. I also have a request from Jerry Jambasian to speak.
Okay, Mr. Jambasian, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I had a question also on the scavengers, and I guess I'm concerned about, you know, them going through the blue barrel also and picking out some items that would ultimately go to recycling. Another question I have is, will there be three different refuse trucks coming to a home three times during the day? Any thoughts on noise and air pollution with the three trucks rather than the one truck per day? And has anybody given any thought to the extra wear and tear on the streets from the heavy trucks? I have a few other questions also. I don't know how you want me to proceed, Mayor.
All right, well, why don't we, why don't we address those two questions real quickly? Mr. Cook, would you like to address those or hand those off to one of our other representatives?
Sure. In terms of the scavenger issue, yes, that is going to be a challenge. So we're gonna be deploying our teams, our parking enforcement teams and our dedicated team to do some early enforcement of that to hopefully deter scavengers. The recycling world has changed dramatically. The lucrativeness of doing scavenging is not the same as it was several years ago, especially for things like cardboard and others. So we will be deploying some efforts to do that, but it will be a challenge. There's no question about it. In terms of the trucks that will be used, Athens will be purchasing new trucks. Part of the other issue related to the current manual process is that the current trucks that are used are not a, would not pass a QMD muster right now in terms of moving towards natural gas and other things. I don't know if Mr. Warner wants to talk or his operations team wants to talk about the scheduling of the three pickups per each waste stream. Warner?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, first of all, first of all, good evening, Mayor Chavez and council. I really appreciate you giving us this opportunity to be here tonight and to speak and answer some questions for you. For the truck question, I'd like to just let you know that we will have brand-new CNG trucks out on the road, which are much cleaner than our older trucks. They, again, are gonna be brand-new. As far as the wear and tear on the streets and stopping by three times as opposed to two times, I want to remind everybody that this will be one-time-a-week service. So we'll be going by everyone's homes three times once a week instead of two times twice a week, you know, which would be a total of four. So we're really going from four passes per week to three per week. And so that will be better for the roads in the city of Temple City. It will be less wear and tear, less of a carbon footprint. And because we are also transitioning to the automated barrels that we will be using, those barrels are going to be able to handle the same capacity that's currently out there twice a week. We'll be able to handle that same capacity once a week and still be able to get rid of all the trash, green waste and recyclables, and just do less passes on the roads. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Jerry, we have a few other people on the line who would like to ask questions. Did you say you had one or two more questions, or do you want to?
Yes, and maybe they're short, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead, real quick.
I know that Burtex trucks that do the automated pickup are quite noisy. And I'm wondering with the newer trucks, are they less noisy than, let's say, a Burtex truck?
Mr. Warner, have you put your trucks up against Burtex and compared the noise?
Well, let me tell you this. Our trucks are very clean and they're as quiet as we can get them. My answer will be yes, they're more quiet than Burtex. Everything's better than Burtex when you're with Athens. Let me say that first of all.
Well, I'm sure I would, I'm sure you would say that. That's
My, my I do want to let you know that we comply with all of the state laws as it regards to the trucks. We are constantly trying to use the most state-of-the-art trucks that we can for noise, for sound, for pollution, et cetera. And so that's something that we strive to always do. And as Mr. Cook explained, in this new amendment, we are going to be replacing our fleet on average every decade, every 10 years. And so you're not gonna be stuck with the same trucks for the next 30 years. We will be getting the most state-of-the-art trucks, you know, roughly every decade in this city. So that's something to keep in mind.
Okay. Just, can I make just one last comment, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm in favor of the evergreen contract. And I guess my question would be, what triggers the renewal going to the 30 years again, since we're at 25 now? Is it a major change or? Is it a major change or a minor change? And then my last, last question is, uh, we're probably the oldest business in Temple City at 66 years under the same family ownership. And we started with, uh, community disposal, chat outing and always pleased with their service and I'm always pleased with Athens. Uh, they do a, a great job, but I think the one thing that, that kind of hit me today, uh, was that this is probably a $10 million hit for them. If you're talking about all the residents in Temple City that, that needed the three carts and you're probably talking about $6 million. And you're probably talking about another $4 million for the trucks. So that money has to be recouped, uh, through the years and that's where the evergreen contract I think would help, but I'm in favor of it and I'll leave you with that. Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I think there was a question in there though. What was the question? I forgot now. The last question you had, I think.
Let's see, I did have a question. Oh, what, what, what would, would trigger the evergreen contract being renewed? Uh, is it a minor change or something major like this?
Well, the, the evergreen contract is a contract that it states will, will continue on until uh, one of the parties decides to, um, you know, change it, uh, but at this point it's going to continue and till something happens, so.
But it was at a little bit, little less than 25 years.
Oh, you're talking about the previous contract?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yes, yes. Well, that, the amendment supersedes that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you for allowing me to ask the questions.
Thank you. All right, why don't we go to Mr. White? Jim, you have a question? Go ahead and unmute yourself. Uh, thank you, there you go.
Well, I didn't really, it was just a hit-and-run comment, but, uh, now that you've given me the floor, um, I've been really happy with Athens Services and I've got a, I've got a five-bedroom house in Temple City that's got a bunch of adults in it. That generates a lot of trash and, uh, we've really enjoyed the unlimited, uh, two-day-a-week pickup. Um, I'm going to have to break into a lot of my housemates that, uh, we're going to have to scale back trash hugely. Uh, is, is there a transition period or is this, uh, is there just going to be a deadline and all of a sudden we're going to one day, one can?
Sure, uh, the Athens Services will be working and you'll be noted because it obviously will not happen citywide at one time. Athens will be working through the transition plan with us to identify the areas of the city they will be able to transition through. Um, if you are looking to purchase more cans, if you want to look, the fee schedule actually breaks down. Yes, it is more costs, but you can upgrade to a 96-gallon container, you can actually purchase, and it's something we negotiated with Athens, to, um, there are increases, but they're pretty modest increases to, uh, provide your, provide you with additional, uh, barrels as well. Uh, at what are pretty modest rates, uh, a- as well. And also too, you'll be breaking down your, your trash a little bit differently as well too. So, yes, as we, as, as, as we said, this is a very substantial change. There's no sugarcoating that at all. Um, but, uh, we, but there, there, if you, if you want to take a look and feel free to contact us, we'll be sending a flyer out to the community depending on the council's action tonight to kind of lay out some issues and we will have, we have a feedback form on our website, but you also have our email and contact information. We're able to help you understand what the fee schedule looks like and also Athens is here, but we're, we're, we're not, the city's not hiding from this. We will help you understand kind of what maybe some things you can do or, or understanding the fee structure as well. To provide you to that solv- solvency service. Yes, it's not, it's not the all-you-can-eat. They're all-you-can-dispose before. It is, it is different, but, um, it is done in what we think is the most economical way we could provide it.
Mayor and city manager, if I could add something?
Yes, go ahead.
But I think Mr. White really raises an excellent question because you have a lot of people who've had trash cans and now they're thinking, oh, I'm just going to have these three barrels and we're going to have enough room. Um, if, if you keep in mind that you're going to have, just with the three barrels, 192 gallons of trash capacity, that's about 12 gallons of trash capacity more than you would have if you just had three regular trash barrels. And I know you have more. Um, but you, as the city manager said, you can, you can have additional cans. But the point I want to make is that the whole point of the bills that the legislature has passed over the last five years are to get every household to generate less trash. So that less goes in the landfill. That's the reason you have to separate out recycling so it doesn't go in the landfill. It's the reason you now have to do yard waste, so it doesn't go in the landfill. And it's this reason that eventually we're all going to be separating at our other organic waste so it doesn't go in the landfill. So, yeah, this is really the state's program to start making us more lean on the trash we generate. Going to be a big problem in my house too, I'll tell you.
Okay.
This is all, this is all good, it's just a huge transition. And, uh, I mean, we're putting out three cans a week, actually, we're putting out three cans twice a week now. And a couple of people in the house are actually recycling the stuff that's worth something. Now, I understand there's an education curve of, for teaching them there's recyclables beyond the CRV that they can put in the blue can. But, I mean, when you say we're, we're, I don't remember what it was, 12 gallons over, you know, what we were before, that's green waste, recyclables, et cetera. And I got some people living in my house that are, um, financially challenged. And it turns out the stuff that the state provides for them to eat doesn't always come in, you know, recyclable packaging, so. Um, it's just a huge transition. So I'm, I'm glad to know from, uh, Mr. Cook that there's a, there's going to be a transition period and we're going to have some notification and I'm going to, I'm going to warn my housemates that we're going to be tightening our belts a little bit on the trash.
Yeah, it's not, it's not something that's going to just happen tomorrow, so you'll certainly have plenty of notice. Okay. All right, uh, Mr. Kelly?
Question? Yes, thank you. Uh, first of all, I just want to say that I haven't lived in Temple City all that long and this was the first place where they actually had two different days for trash, so that was strange to me, but, uh, so transitioning back to one day just seems kind of normal. Um, I think that, uh, Jerry and Mr. White both kind of touched on a couple of my questions. Uh, for the additional trash cans and the cost of those, is that, does, are those prices listed somewhere that I can find currently? Or is that something that we're going to be notified of? Because I'm kind of in the same situation as Mr. White, where we have a lot of trash that, uh, you know, providing us with three, three cans is probably not going to be sufficient for the trash that we, we get rid of in our, we've got a household of eight here and the other thing is, uh, what Jerry had touched on with the trash treasure hunters.
Josh, hold on, why don't we, why don't we take one question at a time? Uh, Mr. Cook, did you want to address that question, uh, or?
Sure, uh, i- in, in the staff report and I, and I wouldn't expect people to run through 64 pages of a staff report, but there is a comprehensive fee schedule where you'll be able to cut, clearly see how much it costs to get an extra bin at 64 gallons, 32 gallons and at 96 gallons.
Okay.
Mayor, would be good to, to quote those, because, um, I, I have them in front of me, so I can just give an example if that's okay with you.
Sure, of course, go ahead.
Um, so for the regular 64 gallons, the maximum rate we're talking is 37.21. For an additional 64 gallons, um, it is, uh, $4.85. So for $4.85, you essentially get 128 gallons. Or you can get a larger bin with 96 gallons, which start out at $40.92. You want extra 96, that's $5.87. So hopefully that gives you an idea, uh, Mr. Kelly.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly, we will publish those, they will get plenty of notice. We're going to, from now start, once this is approved, of course, we will engage in a lot of, uh, uh, information and getting that out to the public and, and I know that, uh, Athens is going to be working with us on that. So it's, none of this is going to come as a surprise and all the information you will possibly need will be provided to you.
Okay.
Second question?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Jambasian talked about the trash treasure hunters that come through. Uh, I think that it's probably going to be more of a problem now if you're limiting it to one day a week schedule, it gives them an opportunity to go through the trash uh, more easily. Uh, I know that it was said that if the trash can, if the lid's not with the trash can, that, uh, the trash won't be picked up. Uh, are, are we going to be liable for the, the lids on the trash cans or what, what's that all going to entail?
I would let, uh, I will, I'll let Mr. Warner speak to this, but again, this is going to be a transition period. We are making a significant shift in services for this community that has had it for decades. We're, we, we, we're asking Athens to take this approach similar to the way we take code enforcement. Education, education, education first. So, but I'll, I'll let Mr. Warner speak to any operational issues that he would, that he would deal with, with the individual customer.
Yeah, thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Kelly, for those questions. First of all, with these new barrels, um, that are going to be larger in capacity, uh, they have lids that are, that are attached to the barrel and they swivel up and down. So if there are lids that are open, um, we're still going to pick up the barrels no matter what. Whether the lids are open or shut, that doesn't matter. So your, everything will get picked up. As far as the scavenging, um, I'd like to, uh, turn some time over to Ed Chen if I can. He, um, has dealt with this in some of our other cities and has some, uh, good points that, that he, he would like to make. Because a few of you have made comments about scavenging and, uh, you know, what are we going to do to, you know, kind of pay attention to that and, and stop that from happening. So Ed, if you'll take a few minutes for a few seconds?
Yes, sir. Um, so earlier today, I spoke with Brian Arizona who I see is on this call. Uh, the city has a very robust, uh, parking and code enforcement and public safety officer program, uh, who I believe, um, can, uh, well, at, at Athens, um, as Gary Clipper once said, we have neighborhood watch, but our truck, trash truck drivers have what we call the Waste Watch, which, uh, our drivers are going through the neighborhoods and they can easily identify, uh, cars that do not belong, people that do not belong. Uh, however, when it comes to enforcement, we really rely upon our city partners. Uh, the city of Temple City has a great code enforcement, public safety program, and I think Brian Arizona can speak to that much more. Uh, there will not be any, uh, revision to city, uh, municipal code. Uh, there are already, uh, laws in existence. Uh, city ordinances that prohibit the theft of recyclables. There's also county codes that cover that as well. So, uh, we will fully cooperate and work with the city as we already do, uh, from the driver, route supervisor, uh, level, along with our partners at the city of Temple City as well as the LA County Sheriff's Department.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. You know, the way I see this, it's like any other new law. Um, it's, it's going to have to be enforced. Uh, and as Mr. Cook indicated earlier, it, a lot of it is going to be about education. Um, telling, you know, letting people know what we expect and what will happen if that law is not followed. And I would imagine that we will get a lot of voluntary compliance. Will there be people, of course, trying to take advantage? Well, yeah. We have people going through stop signs and lights every day. Um, but, you know, we have to deal with it and I think we will. I know we will and, uh, and we are prepared for that. And, and again, during the transition, there's probably going to be more than, than we've seen before, but hopefully we will, uh, be able to take care of that. And, um, as time goes on, uh, we'll get a handle on it. As, as we've heard before, we're not the only city that uses this. This is probably not an uncommon problem, but certainly something that we can overcome, so. Uh, Josh, any further questions?
Well, yeah, I, I guess my main concern with that is that what they've, because I don't mind people going through my trash all that much. I don't have anything much of value, but what the process that I've seen them do is that they go from one trash can and they'll move my trash to another trash can. And if now we've limited the bins to specific things, then that's where my concern is. And I've seen there's, I, you know, there's regular people that go through the, the street consistent with the trash. So that was kind of my concern with that. And I guess the, the only other question I have is with my understanding of the new trucks and everything, is this going to be a reduction in the, the workforce? Does this mean that Athens is going to, are there going to be employees that are going to be losing their jobs because of this?
No, there are not. Um, you, you're right, that there will be a reduction in the workforce because we won't need to have certain helpers on the trucks, if you will, that you might see out in front of your house right now. Um, but I want you guys to know that we, um, we value our employees, uh, a lot at Athens Services. And, uh, Temple City is one of, um, many cities that we service. And so we are a company where we are able to utilize our employees in many different areas or other cities. Um, and sometimes even for other purposes. We have a lot of, um, movement amongst our employees where they're able to move, kind of move up in the company, if you will, um, be promoted to different positions. And so where we might not have certain helpers that we won't need in Temple City, we, um, we already have a home for them come July 1st, when they won't be helpers in Temple City. We already know what they're going to be doing and they will be able to keep their jobs. That's something that we, uh, pride ourselves on. Yeah.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you. You know, I, I can recall going out on my early morning walks on trash day and I would see some of my neighbors would actually put a $5 bill on top of their trash can. And I thought, well, it's for those people who would normally go through their trash, they're making it easier, they just give them five bucks. I mean, in a way, I guess that kind of, not bad. I mean, you know, because obviously the people who are going through the trash are those who are trying to get those, um, uh, you know, recyclables to, to get some money, so. All right, uh, uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any other callers on the line at this time?
Mayor, could I add something?
Who is that?
This is Eric.
Oh, Eric, okay, go ahead.
Uh, I, I wanted to address something that Mr. Kelly brought up, but I think it's important for the public to know. Uh, he asked a question about the rates and the rate sheet. The rate sheet was posted with the agenda, so if you have a, the agenda packet, it's in there. If you didn't get a, a printed packet or otherwise, it's available on the city's website. Just go and find the city council agendas in minutes. You'll see a link to the agenda for today. Go down and click on the, this item description and it will take you to the staff report and the agreement that's attached. Go to page 23 of the agreement, you'll find Exhibit D. It's called maximum service rates. It's several pages. It'll have the rates that will go into effect for the next six months. And then they'll have rates that will go into effect starting July 1, uh, with the transition and it's all there for you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Okay, do we have anyone else who wishes to speak at this time?
Are there three callers on the line? Uh, we'll go ahead and unmute their microphones.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carol Rodenbacher. I've been a resident for 52 years. And, um,
Yeah, I think I, you're in town, haven't we, I think, for, uh, yeah.
So, I don't think you know me. I don't think you know me.
No, no.
We've lived here a while and we've gone through the little bins that were red, white and blue and regular trash cans. And, um, I'm excited to see how this works out. I think this is going to be a, a great step forward for the city and, and for Athens and for the state of California. So, and when I, um, I read through the whole thing, all the pages, and I had actually one question at the very, very end, second page from the last. It talked about light bulbs and batteries. And batteries is always an issue to get rid of because the only batteries that home depot will take are for rechargeable, um, tools. So I would hope that the city or Athens, we can somehow figure out what to do with AA and triple A's and D's and C's and all the other batteries that we have to use and replace on a regular basis. And I've been to the MRF twice and I've been up to the green recycling also, but thank you.
Thank you. Um, do we know what we're going to do with batteries or is there?
I'm, I'm going to punt that to Mr. Warner, but I believe that's hazardous material issues, but, uh, I don't know, Mr. Warner, did you want to speak to recycling of batteries or? I don't know, Mr. Warner, did you want to speak to recycling of batteries or?
Sure, sure. Yeah. As it comes to household hazardous waste or e-waste, there are, there are always going to be certain times when those things can be collected. We also always put out links to where those things can be taken all over LA County. But definitely those things should be disposed of correctly and kept out of the waste as much as possible. Even our little household batteries are good to keep out of the waste and maybe take them to those places.
I, I agree, but what would help me tremendously is if we could have a list of those places. Because I've gone to numerous places. They'll say, oh, you can turn them in at Staples or you can turn them in at Home Depot and you go there and they don't take them.
Okay, well, you know, I think, I think Carol, that's probably something the city can work on and we'll, we'll start developing a list and provide those to the residents like yourself. And I think that's a great idea. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Franklin Riddell, are you still on the line? Peggy, you want to unmute caller eight and nine? See if Franklin's one of those? Hey, does anyone else wish to speak at this time?
Franklin's still in the list of participants, so.
Franklin, you still there? I don't see him on here, but.
I can see Franklin's picture. I think he's talking and he's not, he's still muted.
Okay, Mr. Riddell, you're gonna have to mute yourself, unmute yourself or I think, Peggy, do we have all the callers unmuted at this time?
There he is.
There you go. There you go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay. My thing was Athens, we moved here in 1944, the family. So I've been with Athens ever since then. Or in Temple City then, that was before Temple City, before the school district, with the school district. But we've always appreciated them and come here to speak in their favor. In, in one area that I do wish the city council would go down and look, or go over and look at is the, on the west side of town, and that's in the Burton area. It's a, it's an area that was annexed by the city to become part of Temple City. Is mail comes in from 91775, which is San Gabriel. We do have numerous multiple homes into that area. So you may want to walk that and, and see, see how that works into your plan. I would mention also from an economics perspective that your AGI, I mean, not AGI, the TPI propels the prices. It doesn't really, it's, it's nice to know where it's going to go up, but it's, it's propelling it going up because for every increase that encourages another increase. I'm, I'm sure there'd be some people there that, and your staff that knows more about economics than I do. But it's one thing to think about. So I'm, I have nothing against what, what's happening. It's just that we, we need to keep a control on it. That's all. And there's another item too that I'd like to bring up that I think I'll, Mr. City Manager will give me a few minutes sometime. I'll, I'll talk to him about that and see how he, he works it into the budget and everything.
He'll be glad to give you as much time as you want. Yeah, anytime.
I, I can't hear you, Tom.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Can you hear me?
So.
Are you done?
No, I, my, my ears don't work as well as you can talk.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right. Do you have any other questions?
No, no, I think that pretty well takes care of it.
Okay.
I think Athens has to have a few words here for you. Oh, I know, the batteries. There's the, your, your city library is collecting batteries. They're not doing it right now because of the pandemic, but once they reopen, they'll be collecting batteries also.
That's good news. Hopefully our, our library will be opening sooner than later and hopefully they'll be taking those batteries again. So thank you for that. And I just want to ask you, is there any truth to the fact that back then Athens was using horses to draw, to pull their carts or?
No, no.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure. You know, how far back you were going there. So.
Actually, at that, at that time, the, the lots were acre and a half.
Well, those are, you don't see too many of those.
Only and before coming to Real and, and a few other streets that are in now. So it was, it was a lot more countryside then than it is now.
Yep. Things have changed. Well, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
San Gabriel Mission and.
Yep. Okay. Do we have any other callers on the line who wish to speak at this time?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. We can hear you. What's your name, please?
Okay, so this is Judith Gunther. And I have one question. I may have missed it. Each time we have to have the green and a separate thing and then our trash and another one. Now, if we're only going to have one barrel, is everything gonna, is the green stuff and the trash stuff going to go together then?
No, you're going to have three barrels. You're going to have one. Yes, you will. Each, each resident will have three barrels. They will have one for recyclables, one for green waste and one for trash.
Okay. And are they, they're all going to be 64 gallons?
If that's what you'd like, that's going to be the default size. If you want to go less or you can go more, it's up to you.
I have no idea how much I do now, so I have to figure that out. Thank you.
Well, I think we can give you an idea. Christian, 164 gallon is equal to, I believe, two regular trash cans?
Yeah, on average, Mayor, most people have about a 25 to a 30 gallon trash can at their homes.
Yeah. Okay, so if I use two or three of them for my grain, I would need a bigger one. If I only use two, then I'm okay.
You should be okay with the 64, yes. But keep in mind.
And we, we can change it though, right?
You can change the size anytime you'd like.
Okay. And are they big? So you can't, do they have to stay out all the time?
Well, we would like them to be in a secure spot, of course, depending on where you live. You know, we, we don't want to encourage, obviously you can't leave them out on the street the entire week. You'll need to bring them back in off the street, yes.
But do they have to be on the street then to be picked up because they're going to have the robot arm come up?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so they can't be too heavy because I'm not, we have a lot of seniors, I'm one, that have to make sure we can get it out to the, to the, the street.
And I've been told that if that is an issue, the city or Athens will assist you with that. So that, we don't want that to be a problem. Okay?
They have wheels also.
And they do have wheels, remember, and they're pretty well balanced. So it's, it's not something you're going to have to drag across the ground.
Okay. Good to know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for calling. Okay. Do we have any other callers? Anyone else would like to add to this discussion? Okay, I think hearing none, I will close public comment. And now we are prepared for any final council questions and or comments. And why don't I start here with Mayor Protem you?
I'm muted. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. I, I think, I, I think one of the point that I really want folks to understand is that we did not really take this job of switching a new contract lightly. The city council had been really working very, very hard, along with our special counsel, with our, with our consultant, our three consultants and city manager for the last, seems like couple of years, really working through all the contract terms. And as the, Mr. City Manager had articulated that the new state mandate really increased the cost of how we dispose our trash. And we have taken it upon ourselves, the city council, to really look out for our residents to have a good balance between us, capital costs, hygiene, aesthetics in the city, to come up with the current plan that we have. Yes, we, we, we all one or two day a week pick up because we all live in the city. But I think it is really the, the careful balance of the additional costs that we have to get to meet the state mandate and also, and also to catch up with the, with the new way of doing things. For example, had we had two days a week trash, because you're allowed to put out the trash the day before, the day of the trash pickup and the day after. Literally, you could have trash cans on our road six days a week. Does really limit the number of trash, the number of days of trash cans we on our roads. Will make the city look so much nicer. And like the city manager alluded to, you know, it would be less chance of contamination, people throwing away your trash can lid, touching your trash can and so forth. So it, it, I, I just want to emphasize this is really a very careful consideration. And we really talk about numbers, even though we don't have a published rate, rate sheet comparing us to the other communities. But like the mayor had alluded to earlier, we really carefully consider many, many factors before coming up with the current plan that we have. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vince. Okay. Councilmember Viscara, any final comments?
No, I would just echo what the Mayor Protem was, was saying. I, I have another property where we have this system in place already. It's been there for, for quite a while. And I was used to what we have here in Double City. And when I acquired this other property, we, we had to adjust to, to, to the bins. And it was relatively painless. You just get to be a little better at planning what you're going to do. And not only that, on the block, neighbors get to be cooperative usually. And if you have a day where you're going to have more stuff than you can get in the bin, there's usually a neighbor to willing to let you use what he's not using on that particular trash day. It, it, it seems to work pretty well. But it's gonna, we're gonna have to show them some responsibility ourselves also. So looking forward to this.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
Just a couple of comments. I, I think, I feel really good about moving forward with the automated service. Especially because I think it's a way that the community can really come together in feeling that we're doing something to protect our environment, that each one of us has a responsibility to, you know, work to have a healthier environment for, for our, our children and the children that, and their children. I think there's some unique things that will come from going automated and having to recycle and separate. I think there's ways that, you know, people will shop differently for their food to help reduce that carbon footprint. You can, you know, use a reusable container and buy grains and foods in bulk. So I think there's lots of things that we can help educate our community. And, you know, go from the standpoint that this is a really great thing that we're doing from just that, that standpoint. Of course, getting diesel trucks off our roads is another huge benefit. And I think those are things that people will come to realize as we go through the education process. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you very much for those comments. Councilmember Man?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Chavez. I, I do want to echo a lot of my colleagues' previous points. As well as, you know, Mr. Cook and his presentation. I don't want to belabor the, the issue. But, but I, I think it, it takes, it takes some time and then going through all the information to really appreciate that this issue before us today is, is multifaceted. And I think, you know, Mayor Chavez, you, you alluded to that earlier on in the discussion. That's it's, it's more than just comparing our rates with another city's rates. It's more than, it, it's not an apples to apples comparisons. There's, there's issues related to, you know, what the state is requiring. And the beauty of unfunded state mandates by saying, hey, you got to comply with this. We're not going to fund it for you. In fact, we're going to penalize you if you, if you don't get a plan to play. So what, what I do appreciate is that, you know, this, despite those obstacles that we had to contend with, I, I believe our, our team has, has gone through much deliberation and consideration of trying to find a balance between those factors and not saying we're solely going to make our decision based on once a week versus twice a week. Or this is entirely based on aesthetics or so on and so forth. There's, there's so many things kind of coming into play to, to come to this decision. I, I ultimately, in principle, I, I appreciate the intent of what the state was trying to do. I just don't appreciate the way they implemented it and kind of punted it down to the local level to figure out. But having said that, I, I, I want to extend my, my thanks to the team for really studying this issue and, and putting all this together. I, I do want to make a couple of comments. Of course, you know, depending on what council votes on, on this matter, if this moves forward. I, I, my main concern and focus moving forward is related to this transition plan that we, we hear so many of our residents and business owners commenting on. And in particular, in, if, if you go into the staff report, there, there is an attachment at the end that outlines what those next steps are. I'd like to maybe offer some suggestions about outreach is, although I, I appreciate the power of digital media, social media, email, et cetera. I think there is a good number of our, of our residents and constituents that may not be, may not use those, those means, those forms of media on a daily basis. So if you're not using Facebook, you're not using Instagram, you're not using those forums, we, we need to figure out how we're going to reach those folks. We don't want to be leaving them out of. Second, in transition plan, it acknowledges that Temple City, we're unique in terms of our demographics. Not just our, not just residents that may speak four languages or different languages other than English as their primary language. So from the city's side, I mean, we have faced that challenge with respect to how we get our message out. I think we, there needs to be some consideration as to how we outreach to our residents whose primary language is, is not English. And I think there's a lot of, there were a lot of questions about the sizes of the cans. You know, what is a 32, 4 versus a 96? I think we should think about how, how do we get that information? Do we set up physical cans at a location that residents can go look at and compare it to a normal sized can that you, we normally use? Can we, or video demo of what it looks like to set up your cans on the street side so that it's set up appropriately? Show a video of someone taking trash from your regular bin and dumping it into the new one to see how much it actually fits. I mean, there, there's a lot of, I don't want to get into the nitty gritty of it, but I, I think those are some of the details that's going to be important to really help folks understand, you know, what, what, what do the changes physically mean? I mean, for most of us who've lived here, most of our life, you don't really have a comparison. I myself took for granted that twice a week trash pickup was the normal. So I spent some years in school and asked friends who live in other cities. They thought it was really bizarre that we had twice a week pickup. And in. Um, and in even in the past couple of years, some, I'm sure my colleagues remember, we would sometimes get residents coming, making comments about trash service. And and the opinions are are are, I mean, there's not, uh, at least from what I remember, there it wasn't like very one-sided where everyone insists on two week and then or others would come in and say, why do we have two week? It seems excessive. So I I understand it's subjective and it's relative to each and every person's own experience with with what, uh, what you've dealt with and and what what you, uh, ha- have experienced in in real life. So, um, I I think we are our decision and and this plan that's before us is an attempt to try to reconcile those points as difficult as as it is. Um, so, um, yeah, no, thank, thank, thank you for, I I especially appreciate the residents who've taken time to to attend this meeting, call in, make comments, offer some insights. Um, and and I think, um, I I trust our team will will be taking those into consideration as, uh, as part of the implementation process. Thank you, Mayor Chavez.
Thank you. And I know that, uh, staff has already started thinking about, uh, that outreach and, uh, working with Athens. And I don't know, maybe Gary, you might remember, remember years ago, we were talking about going to the bins? And we all, we actually Athens actually brought some of the bins into our council chambers. I know Fernando, I know you remember that.
Yeah, I do.
It was it was it was a, it was a neat thing. And I know that's, uh, that that those are along those lines. And I I agree with you. I think we need to, uh, for people like Judith and and others who really are not as familiar with the use of bins and and how those are used. Uh, you know, obviously, our our options are limited because of the pandemic. But I think as we get further down the line, uh, hopefully, we'll be able to bring some of those things out and find an avenue to do that. So so thank you for those comments. I think they were all great comments. Uh, I want to thank all the speakers. You know, this wasn't, uh, this wasn't along the lines of, uh, of bike lanes on Last Tunis, but it is a big deal, uh, whenever you change, uh, trash pickup, no question about that. And, uh, you know, it keeps makes me kind of mind that, you know, change is never easy, but but it is inevitable. Um, you know, if twenty twenty is taught as anything, and that is, uh, that we have to be resilient uh, these days. And I think this is one of those areas where the resiliency will come forward. So, um, as as my colleagues have mentioned, uh, we have been working on this for for a long time. We have been working hard. We have been giving it a lot of thought back and forth, you know. I just want to say, and and again, you know, Athens and those have been around a long time. As we heard, Athens has been a a really good community partner. I mean, uh, you know, at every event, you'd see them, uh, they'd either be there personally or they'd have some something set up in some way. And and those are things I think that we really, uh, you know, have to remember. And it's, of course, it is a business and it is something that we need to to look at. But but at the same time, you know, there's something to be said for that good working relationship. And I I think that's finally what came through in this particular situation. So so I want to thank, uh, especially, uh, Christian Warner. I want to thank Garrett Clifford. I want to thank Ed Chen. And of course, our team, Richard Tagore, Erwin, and of course, our city attorney, Eric Vale, and Brian Cook and his staff. Um, they brought a lot of information to us, a lot of stuff that we didn't understand, but they made it understandable. And we were able to to come to this point. So I want to thank everybody for for all the work and all the hard, hard, uh, decisions that have been made over the past few months. So I see Gary with his thumb up and we appreciate it. Uh, Gary, did you want to say anything real quick? You, I know you came on a little bit later, but, uh, go ahead. Uh, can you unmute?
Yeah, I did. No, I, you know what? I was on at the beginning and I just wanted to say that, uh, this is a very innovative new contract. I think you guys are going to be the leader in the industry. This council took it very serious and moved this ahead of the game. You're going to be compliant with Cal Recycle right away. Um, and I think that, uh, we're the company that will work with your residents nonstop and we will make sure that everybody's comfortable. The best benefit of all is the fact that you worked in this bulky program to make sure everybody's waste recycling gets picked up. And it's been a pleasure working with you guys. As you know, Temple City is a special place in my heart. Uh, my other family members work there. We're going to continue to give you the outstanding service you deserve. And I look forward to this transition and we'll all be out there, boots on the ground, doing it together. Christian, Matt, and his team and Ed did a phenomenal job working with your city and we're grateful for the opportunity. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, well, uh, that concludes our presentation. So we are now in a position to hear a council motion. Who would like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion if I can get my screen up.
Okay, we'll wait for you.
Well, can you, can I make the motion to amend as stated? Because it's going to take some time to pull it up. Tom, can you finish reading that?
I think Mr. Vale is going to want to be a little bit more specific than that. So, uh, maybe, does anyone have, does anyone have it in front of them?
Oh, here it is.
There you go.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the third amendment to the amended and restated agreement with Athens Services to collect solid waste, recyclables, and yard waste to comply with state law and mandate and mandates and find that the third amendment to the amended and restated agreement with Athens Services is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act known as CEQA.
Hey, do we have a second? Uh, I think we have a second. Okay. All right. So we have a motion in a second, uh, unless there's any objection. Madam Clerk, do we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, you?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for that. Uh, we will now move on to item B, which is a related item. The adoption of ordinance repealing Title VI, Chapter II, Article C, garbage and rush rubbish disposal, and Title VI, Chapter II, Article D, Integrated Waste Management Program of the Temple City Municipal Code, and adding Title VI, Chapter II, Article C, solid waste management to the Temple City Municipal Code. Uh, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, a member of the council. You've heard a lot from me tonight. I'm going to turn most of this over to, uh, your former city attorney and special counsel, in this case, Mr. Vale. But this is a compendium component of what you just passed now. It is the enforceable language in the change in the ordinance, in the in the law that we will be then submitting to Cal Recycle to show our compliance, not only programmatically, but in 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 law as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Vale.
Uh, thank you, uh, Ryan, and thank you, Mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be in front of you tonight, providing this, uh, staff report. I know you've been at it for two hours, so I'm going to try to be brief. I'm happy to go back and answer any of your, the community's questions that I can. Um, your first question might be, why do we have to do a new ordinance? Don't we have one already? Yes, you do have one, uh, already. You've had one since the nineteen sixties. And by and large, your existing solid waste ordinance is still that same nineteen sixties ordinance. And so one of the things that we are doing today is updating you to at least get you to nineteen eighty-nine, where the Integrated Waste Management Act was adopted, and then bring you all the way into the mid-two thousands. Because the, uh, the state has really passed a number of different laws. Uh, your city manager, uh, Mr. Cook, really went through them already. But the main themes here are recycling, recycling, recycling. And the reason that they want you to recycle, not only recyclable paper and aluminum type products, but also now vegetative material, which is your organics, is to keep them out of landfills. Because landfills have become a scarce resource, not only in California, but in, uh, in the United States. And so they want most of this material to go other places. And so this ordinance really embraces all of those new laws and tries to anticipate what is on the near term horizon, uh, with regard to organics. You'll you'll see definitions in here of edible food waste and an edible food waste program. Were not there yet in terms of the law or the regulations. It might be there in the near term. So we've included some definitions in the ordinance that relate to that. And in fact, you'll notice a lot of definitions in this ordinance. And that's because there are so many defined terms now in the Integrated Waste Management Act. Um, the other part of this is to orient the city to its new and expanded role in solid waste management. The state is really requiring the city itself to be responsible for the enforcement of the diversion requirements, the requirements with regard to collection and disposal of, uh, solid waste, all the way down to making sure people have the right colors of carts uh, and that they're putting the right materials in the right carts. Uh, there's now something called contamination of carts and waste material that we have to deal with. So there's some provisions in here on that. But if you take those two themes together, and you'll see in the staff report a number of bullet points about some of the major changes that we've made. Um, that's that's really what we're here to do. We have to adopt this ordinance in tandem with the the third amendment that you just adopted in order to be compliant with the new state law. Um, I I will point out, one other item that came up is in a question by a couple of members of the public, uh, with regard to scavenging. And I'll point out that this ordinance makes it very clear that scavenging is prohibited. Uh, you can find, uh, that in sections six dash two C dash sixteen and dash thirty prohibits it. And then it imposes the penalty, uh, of either a misdemeanor, infraction, or a fine that can be levied for that activity. So, uh, it's it's a good point, the members of the community to bring that up as an issue. This ordinance tries to address and enable the city to be able to confront that issue. Um, this ordinance will be read by title tonight. If you move forward with it, it will come back at your next regular council meeting for actual adoption. And then it will take thirty days to take effect. Your franchise agreement will take effect immediately. And there's some work that Athens obviously will be able, need to do. But this this ordinance lays kind of the groundwork for the rest of your term. Um, and in the future, I know Greg Murphy, your city attorney, uh, will probably be bringing you periodic amendments as not only new state law comes out, uh, but Cal Recycle, that's the state agency that controls integrated waste management, makes new regulations. Um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I do have four, uh, errors that I need to correct, uh, with the ordinance. They're really just typographical errors. I can read those into the record now, Mayor, or I can wait until we have discussions and then read them at a later date or later in the session, uh, depending on what your preference is.
All right. Why don't we, uh, since they're just type those, why don't we do this? Why don't we go through the comments and any kind of public comments? And then, uh, before we get the motion, you can add those things and then we'll get the motion.
Very good. Thank you.
So let's go to council questions. Uh, this, uh, council member Mann, are there any questions for staff on this matter?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
No questions.
Thank you. And Mayor Protem, you?
Uh, no questions either, so.
You know, you would think that since this is a a law that I would have a question, but I have no questions either. So I think, uh, our city attorneys have done a good job in putting this together. So, and it's far be it for me to make any changes. So, um, all right, I will then ask the, uh, city clerk, I will open public comment and first begin by asking our city clerk if there are any email requests to speak on this matter.
No, Mayor, there are no email requests to comment.
Okay, and I'll ask you to unmute our callers and any of the, any of you who are on the line. Uh, do any of you have any comments to make on this particular matter at this time? Hearing none, I will close public comment. Any final council quest? I'm sorry. Judith? Okay, I couldn't hear you. Who is speaking?
I think that was background error.
Is it just background? Okay. Okay, so I'm going to close public comment. Um, any final questions or comments from council? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Good. Mayor, I do need to read the.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Here, I told you what to do and then I forgot. I'm glad you were around to remind me of those things.
I'm here to remind you.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, I I will, I will just read these so the public can hear them. And then I will confer with not only the city attorney, but your city clerk, uh, to make sure that the draft is corrected by the by the second reading. Uh, the first change is in the second recital of the ordinance. Um, for some reason, the citation to the Integrated Waste Management Act, which is in the, uh, Public Resources Code, is shown as four thousand at sec. It's not, it's forty thousand at sec. That 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 error also occurs, uh, on, it's exhibit two, that's the actual ordinance text itself, under section six dash two C dash zero, paragraph B two, same same issue, it's forty thousand, not four thousand. Uh, under the definition of bulky waste in exhibit A of the ordinance, uh, there is a section that, or a sentence that says bulky items shall, uh, specifically, and then it says items commonly known, uh, there's just a a missing couple of words there. Instead, it should say bulky items do not include items commonly known in the waste industry as brown goods, e-waste, et cetera. We'll make sure to get that cleaned up. And then, uh, finally, in section six dash two C dash ten, uh, the section actually says that the city council will approve the agreement by resolution. Um, in your city, that's in error. Uh, you can either authorize entering into a franchise by resolution or ordinance. Your ordinance authorizes you to do that, so we don't need to approve the agreement by reso. You're fine as is. I will just be striking out by written resolution. And that is the last of the changes. Thank you for indulging me.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
I I knew I was going to do it at least one more time, right? Okay, well, thank you for those, uh, those corrections. And with those corrections, can we have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I move to introduce and wait for the reading of ordinance number twenty-one dash ten fifty-three, repealing Title VI, Chapter II, Article C, garbage and rubbish disposal, and Title VI, Chapter II, Article D, Integrated Waste Management Program of the Temple City Municipal Code, and adding Title VI, Chapter II, Article C, solid waste management to the Temple City Municipal Code. And with these codes as, uh, re- as corrected by Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Without objection, Madam Clerk, we have a roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, you?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. So take a. So take a big, deep breath. And I know that Councilmember Viscara probably wants a break, but I think if we can indulge for another few minutes, we might be able to finish this meeting off. Okay, so.
I'm good.
You're good. All right. So let's move on to item number eleven, our update from city manager.
Mayor, the clerk does need to read the title of the ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're correct. Boy, I'm kind of screwing up this last meeting. I should know better. I will ask the city clerk to please read the title of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number twenty-one dash one zero five three, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Temple City, California, repealing Title Six, Chapter Two, Article C, garbage and rubbish disposal, and Title Six, Chapter Two, Article D, Integrated Waste Management Program of the Temple City Municipal Code, and adding Title Six, Chapter Two, Article C, solid waste management to the Temple City Municipal Code.
Thank you very much for that. We will now move on to item eleven, our update from our city manager, Mr. Cook.
Mayor Chavez, I will be brief. The council over the last, during this COVID period, has really made an effort to outreach to the business community and to the development community. One issue that's been brought up recently is that many, many in the development community look for extensions for their entitlements, be it a building permit or otherwise. I just want to let you know that the building, excuse me, the Community Development Department is working on a notification system to those building owners, people who have entitlements, when those entitlements will be lapsing and when they are due for an extension, and if they're due for an extension. So that, just an extra effort to work with our business community to make sure that those who are investing in our community know what issues they're facing. In the time of COVID, you know, business as usual has not been business as usual. So we want to make sure that we're extending ourselves just a little bit further than we would otherwise to make sure, you know, if somebody has a building permit and it's about to expire, if they can get an extension, we can give that extension. The council's done many, have taken many measures over the last year or so. This is an additional administrative measure that we'll be taking over the next, over the next few weeks and months. The council staff is already in the process of working through that. They'll be doing that shortly as well. So thank you to Mr. Reimers and his staff for assisting on that front. So, and lastly, I'd be remiss one more time if I didn't think this was a long effort. And it was without, we take our responsibility, both from a regulatory standpoint as staff and a fiduciary standpoint, to make sure that we're presenting the council with all the information that they need and in the interest of the community, as you do every time as well. Having experts like Mr. DeGore Erwin, Mr. Vale, and I know, speaking for my colleague, Mr. Murphy, thank them and staff as well, Ms. Avery, our city clerk, our communication staff for assisting. And this is going to be a long haul. Tonight's effort is one step in a continuing effort over the next few months that will be challenging but necessary. So thank you. And that'll do it for today tonight, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Vale, do you have an update tonight for us, Ernie? I know you're filling in for Mr. Murphy.
I don't have an update. I'll leave that to Mr. Murphy. Although I would like to express my thanks and gratitude for you letting me to sit in on your meeting tonight, be your interim city attorney for, you know, one last little splash. I will, I will say it was a treat for me to see the Royal Court. I always enjoyed all of the community events and things that you had at the start of your meeting. I wish you had had the robotics team that usually comes out or one of the baseball teams. That stuff's so great. It's a wonderful community. And I really enjoy the opportunity of being able to work with you all. So thank you, and I leave you in good hands with Mr. Murphy, as I know you already know that, but I think of you all often. Thank you.
Thank you, and it's always nice.
Eric, he will be invited to come and enjoy our library celebration when that takes place.
I am looking forward to that, too.
We'll now move on to item thirteen, council reports regarding any ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any reports this evening?
Mr. Mayor, the public works and infrastructure standing committee met last Friday to discuss the Primrose Park project. Staff gave us the report and also Mr. Cook was there as well. The committee is consisted of myself and Councilmember Mann. We discussed the recent bid and also some of the value engineering options. I would give staff directions. And Mr. Cook will be bringing this matter back to the city council, I believe, at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much for that report. Right, we will now move on to item fourteen. Councilmember Viscara?
I don't really have anything except to ask Brian a question. Are we coming with the vaccine clinic? Are we on track?
Yeah, we did get, we did get, thank you, tonight you did pass in your consent calendar the permit for Harold Kristen Health Center. They have informed us that they, like most community centers and community health clinics, are not getting the level of vaccines. But it looks like in early part of March, there will at least be one three-day clinic that will take place. I will provide the council with more information about that soon. We should get that nailed down in the next few days. But yes, the clinics should start. They may not start, they may not be as frequent as initially anticipated, but there will be, there will be clinics at Live Oak Park, starting hopefully in early March.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Mann?
Hi, yes, thank you, Mayor. But just really quickly, I just want to give a shout out to our Parks and Rec team in conjunction with the Temple City Chinese American Association for putting together the virtual Lunar New Year program that we saw this past weekend. I know it's highly unusual, but given the circumstances, I enjoyed it and thought it was well put together. Also, I'm looking forward, of course, to the Camilla Festival. Even though that's virtual, I believe the committee has worked hard to put that together. So I'm looking forward to seeing that in about two weeks. Also, I just want, also thank city staff for bringing back the Citizens Academy, which I understand is going to be, again, in virtual format. I believe that's February 25th, a Thursday, I believe. So I'm looking forward to that. I know we've mentioned and talked about that on occasion within the past couple of years. I think it's a, it's a great program, having gone through it myself many years ago. So to be able to offer that as, that our citizens can participate in and learn from, I think it's great. I wish we could find more opportunities to do things virtually. That's potentially meaningful to our residents. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone, my colleagues especially, for being so committed to move the trash amendment forward to everyone who had a part in it. Athens is a great community partner, and they will continue to do so. So I am thrilled that we'll be able to move forward with them. My history with Athens goes back about right when the Murph in Almani had just been built. And I had the opportunity to take my special ed students over to see how the operation was run. And it was just so informative and they couldn't have been better hosts. And I, at that time, I, before I even knew anyone that other than our trash drivers that came up and down the street knew anyone at Athens, I thought they just really cared about those kids coming out because many of those kids that I taught in South Almani's parents worked for Athens. So I always take that to heart. I've seen what they've done with other communities and how involved they've been in our own. So I just really want to thank them for their commitment also to making this agreement be the best it could be for our residents. And I just know it's going to be, continue to be a great partnership. I just want to give a shout out to our mayor, Tom Chavez. I cannot believe that this was your last meeting as mayor. Where did the time go? I mean, it's just been unbelievably fast. And by this time, we've already had an invitation to the reorganization. So is something happening that Brian, you can share with us? I mean, when are we going to get our new mayor?
It's on the agenda for next, for March 2nd.
Is it? Okay, thank you for letting me know the date. I'll be sure to put it in my calendar. But thank you, you have been the best virtual mayor Temple City has ever had.
Yeah, well, hopefully the first and last.
But, but thank you. I really appreciate you.
Well, thank you. Mayor Protem, you?
I wanted to echo what Councilmember Sternquist said. Mr. Mayor, we really appreciated your service, especially in such a special, special year. A lot of challenges and thank you for really taking the lead and guiding and leading the city. I'll be amiss to, to not to mention to everybody that March 2nd, 6:00 p.m., we all need to set a same time to listen to Mayor Chavez to deliver, again, virtual State of the City address. And finally, I want to also take the time to thank all the community members who reach out to us regarding the trash contracts. We really appreciated your comments and emails and also over time then kind of speaking to us how you feel about our trash contracts. I think what we have approved tonight is really going to be a mutual benefit to the city, to the residents, and also to Athens as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I'm not going anywhere, so I will be here at the next meeting, at least to get it started. You know, obviously, I appreciate the kind words and we'll all have the opportunity to speak at the next meeting. But I just want to say really quickly that, obviously, it has been a challenging year, but, but it has been less challenging because of Mr. Cook, our staff, and of course, my colleagues. You know, we got this done together. It's not a year that we would wish on anybody, but, but we made it through. And I think we made it through very well. And so I want to thank all of you for all that you've done. Just real quick, I know that Fernando brought up the vaccination clinic, and I want to thank Mr. Cook. I just wanted to just reiterate that that was one of the items that we approved tonight on the consent calendar. And that was the, to have or not operate a COVID vaccine, vaccination clinic at Live Oak Park. So of course, depending on the availability of the vaccines, will determine how busy we are. But I'm glad that we were able to do that. And again, a big shout out to Brian, Brian Arizumi, and everyone that has worked on getting that, getting that reality. I also want to thank actually Red Eighty-Eight Media. You know, we kind of take them for granted because, you know, they're always there. They're always filming, of course, our, our council meetings. They're always there to help us. There's no difference. But, but, you know, they've been behind the scenes at, at pretty much all of our virtual events this year. They've been doing a great job in producing it. This last week, I had the privilege of putting together the State of the City address. And I have a new appreciation for actors now of all the different takes and all the different things you have to go through, including the pat downs for the sweat bubbles that come on your brow. But it was an interesting process, and I want to thank them for making it, you know, certainly much easier and for all they've done. And I look forward to the finished product as we all do. So hopefully, it'll be a true reflection of everyone and their efforts this past year. So thank ready for that. You know, of course, Travis and Mark and, of course, Amir for all the work that they've done. And, okay, so with that, that concludes my comments. And so we will now move on to item fifteen. Are we going to recess to successor agency, to the Temple City Community Development Agency meeting? I don't know. Do we have? I know it's on the agenda, but I don't have a separate agenda on that, do we?
Sorry, Mayor, we have a, we have minutes and also the warrant.
Okay, for item fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, well, I'll go ahead and call to order the, that meeting. We have roll call, please?
Yes. Agency member Mann?
Here.
Agency member Sternquist?
Here.
Agency member Viscara?
Here.
Vice Chair Yu?
Here.
Mayor Chairman Chavez?
Here. Okay, I think, believe we have a consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Yeah, we have motion and a second. Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please?
Thank you. Agency member Mann?
Yes.
Agency member Sternquist?
Yes.
Agency member Viscara?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yu?
Yes.
Chairman Chavez?
Yes. Hey, do we have any other reports?
No.
No, no, the report's just the warrants.
Okay. Is that a motion to approve payment of the warrants?
That, that, yeah, that's part of the consent.
Is that the consent calendar, wasn't it?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
I apologize. I don't have the agenda in front of me, so. All right, unless there's any other business, we will adjourn this meeting and we will move back to a regular meeting, item sixteen. Any additional public comments not listed on the agenda? I see that we have a few speakers left, but do we have any public comment emails at this time, Madam Clerk?
No, Mayor, no, there are no email public comments.
Okay, and if you'll unmute those who are on the line, do we have any final public comments for those who are still with us? Hearing no response, I will close public comments. And with that, we are adjourned at 10:59. We just beat the 10 o'clock witching hour, so. Right, well, good evening, everyone. Have a great night and have a great rest of your week. And hope to see you all soon. Be safe. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.